Three with addressing March fifteenth, which is scheduled as a workshop day and moving that to make it a student day. And ten four, Chris Farmer will be sharing the preliminary budget with us. Making executive session four oh five, ten point five, and executive session sixty one oh one, ten point six. So can I just get that in writing before we go in there? Like, thanks, still those numbers. You want to see this? I don't know if I can be able to read my writing, but. No, I just need all the numbers that you said for the executive session. What do you think? Oh, sorry. I thought you had it written there. It is on the bottom of that. Do you see it though? We'll get it after. All right, well, I need that page back. Oh, sorry. I got eight, an approval of minutes for January ninth meeting.
So moved.
Um, actually, oh yeah. Christmas. A second, Danielle, was a second. Any corrections or changes? I have one. Ten point two, which was a consideration to revise policy B C V conflict of interest, was actually not passed, it was tabled.
Did I not put that in there?
It says passed unanimously.
Hmm.
Yes.
With the correction, all those in favor? Now we'll move to public comments. Seeing none, we will move to a presentation by Delaney and Michael McKinnon for the dynamic learning.
Hey, Mike, can you hear us?
Hi, guys, how are you doing? Sorry. Didn't want to distract. Yes, I've been working alongside Delaney and R L R S.
R L R S.
I do think I'm getting a little bit of feedback. Not sure if you're any hearing that or if it's just me. That's better. Perfect. Awesome. So I'm just going to share my screen, give a quick overview of e-dynamic learning, how the district has been using it currently, and some more of our offerings. I promise not to keep you this long. So I am going to share my screen. Be able to see this PowerPoint screen here? Awesome. Thank you for the head nod, Deborah, appreciate it. So again, my name is Mike McLean, thanks so much for having me tonight. I'm part of the account management team here at e-dynamic learning, former middle school teacher, I am based in New Jersey, definitely not as cold as you guys, we are right around thirty-five here, so a little bit warmer than the past few days. And I do apologize if you hear my crazy two-year-old son in the background, my eight-month pregnant wife is attempting to keep him under wraps right now, so I apologize. But again, I've been working alongside Delaney and Heidi over at R L R S at the moment. Their campus has access to our middle school and high school level game design courses as well as our phys ed courses. So again, just a quick overview of what we offer. So e-dynamic learning, you know, who are we? We are the largest provider of C T E and elective curriculum in North America, service grade six through twelve, we are a complete textbook replacement, we have over two-hundred-and-fifty courses, and our goal is to really provide students with exposure to the many career paths that are available to them. And our largest focus again is on that C T E aspect of our program. So during the course of this program, students are going to have that career exploration aspect at the middle school level where they're going to get a general gist of all of the different career fields. And by then, when they're done, by the time they get to high school, we, our hope is that they have an idea of a pathway that they'd like to pursue and a pathway that they will be on for their high school career. And that scope of sequence of courses will actually prepare them to actually sit for and earn an industry certification by the time they're done. So in terms of certifications, our courses are actually backwards designed to help students pass those industry certifications. So we get subject matter experts, people who have written these exams, subject matter teachers, to unpack the standards and actually create a blueprint for these, for our courses. And we did just release our past promise, which says that if you are using our courses to prepare your students to pass any of these industry certification exams, should they not pass the first time, we'll actually reimburse you to give them another chance on us, you know, putting our money where our mouth is, saying, you know, our courses are actually good enough to have your students prepare them to earn those certifications and not just say, hey, good luck, and never hear from us again. So definitely want you guys to be able to take advantage of that. And we do, again, in earning those industry certifications, want to prepare students to be ready to enter the workforce upon graduating high school. So we recently released our workplace and internship readiness course, which is a combination of this course here, the workplace and internship readiness course, which is designed to be taken over the course of one year. So first semester, students are going to take this course, they're going to learn those employability skills such as leadership, time management, communication, and more. And then throughout the course of this course, students are going to create a resume, a cover letter, they're going to learn how to professionally communicate a work, how to give a professional presentation, and then actually it's going to dive even deeper, and there's a financial literacy aspect of this course, so students are going to design a budget, they're going to learn about the pros and cons of renting versus buying, the difference between stocks and bonds, and actually create a savings plan. So you would take this during the first semester and then gain some real-world experience during the second semester. So we've paired this with our knowledge matter simulations. So we want students to not only retain that information that they're learning in our courses and in this program, but actually apply it to a real-life scenario. So students will have the chance to jump into a simulation that they're most interested in, you know, whether it's restaurant management, hotel management, sports and entertainment marketing, entrepreneurship, et cetera. And they're going to jump into a low-stakes environment where students are going to have complete control of, let's say, a restaurant. Students are going to have to design a menu, design, decide on their advertising and marketing strategies to try to make the restaurant as profitable as possible. During the course of all of this, there are real-world consequences. So if you're going to price your menu too high, you're not going to have enough people come through the door. If you make your menu items too cheap, you're not going to make enough profit to stay afloat. So it is a fun way for students to compete, a great way to gamify the classroom, students love, again, seeing whose restaurant can make the most money or to see whose business is most profitable. And, you know, aside from how much students enjoy our courses, you know, how do we meet the needs of your students within the courses? So, you know, those five oh four I E P E L L students that you're having in all of your classes, they're going to be able to access this literacy toolbar that's at the top of all of our courses. When you click that accessibility button, this toolbar pops up, students are going to have the ability to have our courses read aloud to them, they can speed up, slow down, the speed at which is read to them, they can have it translated into ninety languages, two-thirds of those languages will actually read aloud to students in their native language. I know that when I was teaching middle school, I had a student come from Italy, and these courses could read aloud in Italian to him. So a super unique scenario, but it was something that I could lean on in the classroom. And from there, you know, we have a built-in picture and word dictionary, if there's a word that students aren't familiar with, and of course, all of our courses are five oh eight compliant. And lastly, I did want to share that students really do enjoy our courses, we have the data to back it up, three out of four say after taking one, they want to take another. To be fair, we are not teaching the core content, so I could see why a student who takes, you know, cybersecurity or entrepreneurship might want to take another course of ours again, but it does just go to show that students really do enjoy our courses. I'm going to stop sharing, and I appreciate you guys letting me give a brief synopsis of our courses, what we offer. At this point, are there any questions that I could answer in regards to your access currently or any of our courses or specifics?
Me and Heidi were going to kind of speak to how we're implementing it so far as pilot here. Sean actually did it. Did Ellie?
Uh, Ellie did teach me, yeah.
Yeah, so Sean and Ellie, yeah, did a video game class, middle school game design class. And then I've been using it for middle school, career education curriculum, and then just what Mike really touched on, what we're hoping to do next year is really lean into the career education and the hands-on experience part, and we want to get the workplace readiness and the internship simulation. It kind of goes right in with our life skills, like Lindsay Richards' life skills class, all the things that she did are in that. And it would just give us like a consistent, continuous curriculum. So we're excited about that. And yeah, just really leaning into the career exploration part, the career readiness. Yeah, that's kind of how we see it being implemented for next year.
Yeah, I, I, oh, sorry, Seth, you can go. I just, you know, I think it fills a niche, you know, we have fosters for our juniors and seniors, and I think a big piece of what we struggle with sometimes is that engagement, connection, aspirations, where are we going with this? And I think it's an excellent piece to complement that and to get it to younger kids. You know, junior year is pretty late, you get freshmen, sophomore, we get it into the middle school, I think it's going to be good work, we've already talked about how this connects to local work experience. So I'm excited about this because it serves that, you know, the kids that are unsure of why they're here, unsure where they're going, this is what they need to help in that. I'm excited about it. Thank you, Michael, for presenting.
No, I was just going to say that we're really excited about having our work experience students as well as what Seth and Delaney have already spoke to. We have a number of teams that are interested in work experience, and that was a program that I was a part of developing back in the early two thousands, and since COVID, we have not been placing students in work experience. I did place one just recently, the second semester, and so we're really looking to bring that back and give kids that option. But this curriculum will be a big part of students being out in the workplace and making sure that they have those soft skills that are necessary for them to be successful in any type of work environment. So these guys have been working with us, we've been talking with them for over a year now, Delaney, and they have just been excellent, supportive, helpful, knowledgeable, and have to be able to have the resource of a research-based curriculum, which, you know, I think is imperative today. And it's constantly being updated, and so I feel really lucky that in our remote area where we don't have a lot of different examples of careers and job opportunities, that we're going to be able to have this as a resource. So I'm really excited about that.
Sure.
I just wanted to say that I, like, from the perspective of a student, I think it's really amazing that you guys are doing this whole program, like, the, at least in my opinion, the thought of just, like, once leaving college, if I want to experience something different, like, I want to try something new, going into that with absolutely no idea is, like, absolutely terrifying, and being able to be exposed to it while in school with the support of your mentors, I think it's a really excellent opportunity, really happy for my siblings, that they're going to be able to go and have that stuff once they're my age. So thank you for that.
I don't know if I've talked in front of the camera before, but I, um, I tried the course, one of the courses out with Allison, a video game design course, we used it as an enrichment time for middle school students, and we really enjoyed it, it was easy to follow, and we could, instead of trying to create content, the content was created for us, and then we could evaluate how the students were doing. So that was a huge time saver, and it was, it was good.
Okay. I was just going to ask Heidi specifically, I think last time you had talked about, like, actually getting some of these students out in the workforce. So how will this, these simulated courses or real-life experiences, how will that then translate to getting these students out into our community?
Well, what, like, work experience has always been an option for students who have an aspiration to work in a specific field that is connected, and we want them to be able to have, we would want them to take this course along with their work experience. So it would be kind of a partnership of having that hands-on opportunity, but also not necessarily leaving it up to the employer to hit all those areas, because even though we are very, very fortunate with the places that our students have gone to work in our work experience program over the years, the supervisors and mentors have been outstanding. But this just kind of, you know, touches all the bases and it's going to reinforce, I agree, what that employer would be trying to teach, so we kind of be getting it both in a hands-on setting, but also in this setting as well.
And then ideally, like, kind of in, like, more of a long-term thing, but if this was something that, like, all of our sophomores did in life skills, they got this class, because typically work experience is usually due to younger than that. But, you know, ideally, it would be like, that's like a prerequisite for, so you do your life skills, you get the workplace readiness course, the simulation, and then junior, senior year, you can go into a real-life situation having already been prepared. So until we get to that point, I think we can move together.
Right.
It'll work really well, too, but like, ideally, we're kind of looking at, if this is your life skills curriculum that includes all the workplace readiness, and then you're ready to go your junior, senior year into a real-life setting.
We just don't want the kids that haven't had the opportunity to not, to miss out on this, so they would be taking it together next year, and potentially, then hopefully, like Delaney said, all the other students would have already had it, and it would be like a prerequisite of taking Alpha Two, you would need to take Alpha One, so if you wanted to do work experience, you would have needed to take this class. Or, let's say, a student moves here and they get a look here and go to our school their sophomore year, then we would have them take it at the same time. So we're just looking at different options and are really excited to just bring more opportunities for our students.
What training is going to be done or has been done with the rest of the staff? Because I'm looking at this as, there seems to be a lot of information for enhancing curriculum across the board, enhancing, you know, pulling some of these pieces in document in the current curriculum or class situation. Is there a plan on that? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is there a plan to, with administration and staff, to integrate that through maybe the next workshop or something? Because it seems to me like this is a fantastic resource where if you're like, oh, I'm working on this, let me go search in this database and see if there's a piece I can pull out and be more efficient with my planning time and curriculum time and enhance a, I don't know, a sector or a group or a segment of whatever you're presenting in your normal curriculum.
I think, I think I can speak to that a little bit, because we're, we're trying to, like, one step at a time, we're trying to really not make decisions for our other teachers. We saw this as a great opportunity and certainly discussed it with Seth and Georgia and the high school and middle school teams, but realized that, you know, for us, and with career education, it was something that we really wanted and felt that was in the best interests of our students. So teachers have been given the opportunity to look at it and are going to continue to look at it, but as Sean and Lindsay and Delaney continue and start to use this program anymore, people will have the opportunity to dive in there and look at it and see if it's something that they want to take advantage of. So I agree with you, I do think that because of the research that has gone into it and that it's best practice, but I also know that teachers want the opportunity to make those choices, so I think that's where we are right now.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. The way I kind of approached things last couple of years is like the bar in this is we go slow, so we piloted this year with a few classes, we're going to expand it to the C T E, and then if it works, it works for us, it works for our staff to continue to build it, incorporating it, because it is a good resource, but when you add things as a resource or additional responsibility to what goes, so you know, when you develop slowly, you see what fits and what works, and I think as they see the opportunity, what's there, I think it will grow and, yeah.
Licensing, what fiscal note is that for us as far as doing this? Is it unlimited license, so every staff member?
Depends, I think, we're, we're obviously going to speak more to this, but it depends on the plan, like, there's different options that we could go with. We found that for this year coming up, the best way to go was piecemeal, so using classes we know for sure we're going to use them, rather than, you can pay for a whole library, you just run the risk of something not being used. So this year, we thought that the best course of action was to go for the specific classes that we are planning on fully implementing this year, and then expanding if needed, as needed, that kind of thing.
So à la carte sushi made, rather than ordering the boat?
Right.
My worry, my whole worry with ordering the boat, was if we order the boat and just use the dinghy and let go, we just spent like that much money on like two kids, like, that's, yeah.
Okay, cool. So I was just curious, it sounds, it sounds pretty amazing. I kind of like the fact that, you know, if staff want, I'm not looking to put additional per, not staff, but I'm just saying, that's your information, I know I'm always looking in my professional career to, there's opportunities to pull, pull information without extra resources, especially if it's available. So, so even though it's à la carte, staff can go in and look at it, browse it, and then make a decision through our normal channels to purchase those pieces.
And we're feeling like this year, next year's, we're offering more than this year, and we, we hope that that will be a continuum. But these guys have been so flexible with allowing us to really look at what our needs are in paying for those things, and knowing, like Seth said, that the last thing we want to do is spend money, and people either don't have the time or haven't been properly prepared to use the resource. So we're just trying to take it slow and, and, but I, I think that the more we use it, the more it's going to be used, so I'm kind of excited about that.
Great. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you, Delaney, Michael, and Heidi.
Thanks, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Thanks, guys, have a good one.
So, I'm so sorry, my lovely friend Danielle, actually, John, the real mess in the last minutes was, the whole discussion around tabling that thing and the table motion got put under the wrong, like, I switched motion passed with the whole discussion on the next item. So I edited that, but I wanted to make sure that it was clear on the record that I moved those two things up. Thank you.
Yep.
Now, moving on to comments from me, I don't really have anything to say, I guess. Mary's out sick, so I've thrown into this, but I, she didn't give me anything to say, so. Morna, your next.
Okay, so I do have a number of things to report out on tonight. The first thing I'm going to report out on, I'm going to put my principal's hat on for a minute, and because I have a very special announcement to make, as you may know or not know, we were competitors again this year in the winter kits. We went up against three, thirty-three hundred other students competing. We placed second overall, so we were silver. We were awarded three thousand dollars. Thank you to Lindsay Richards for organizing all of the events, she is amazing and so passionate about health and wellness. And, you know, it's a ton of work to do this. I also would like to thank all of the area businesses, including Classic Provisions, Franklin Savings Bank, Grangeley Health and Wellness, Grangeley Adventure Company, Mount Blue TV, and our very own P T A, and the main community health coalition for your support. If I love somebody else, I really apologize, but there was just so many wonderful people that helping out with this, so. And we also walked away, I'm looking for you, with this beautiful trophy. So we have been competitors in this for the past three years, and we have placed every year. So they're pretty impressed with our middle school.
Can I just interrupt for a second?
Of course.
I got to work a lot of days here with the kids doing all the fun activities, mostly they had me on this sledding hill, because I think I was about to step pushing the kids down the hill. But Lindsay really does pour her heart into this, and if you see her, congratulate her, she is an amazing human, that our kids are very lucky to have. Did you want to think that Seth, the thing?
No, yeah, just the winter night, just thanking all the businesses, the horse rides, and it was a great turnout. That night at the, at the park, there must have been, you were there, a hundred? I mean, there was a lot of people, they ate some marshmallows, I don't know that, hmm, but other than that, it was good. No, it was, it was great, a lot of hard work goes into it, and, yeah, keeps kids moving.
Thank you. So the budget process is well underway, Chris is going to speak more to that when he reports out on finance committee, but I'd also like to just thank Roxanne for all your hard work, you are amazing as well, so, you work countlessly. I have, we have, together, we've worked through five draft budgets to get where we, we were tonight, so thank you very much. And let's see, so meetings that I attended over the past month, on January nineteenth and February ninth, I attended the Foster Tech Advisory Board meeting, Chris attended the January nineteenth meeting with me. Items on the agenda for discussion were communications, program updates, and we're now getting into preliminary discussions on the budget, so we'll keep them all posted. At this point, it doesn't look like there's going to be any financial obligations for us, so that's good news. And it sounds like they are adding an electrical program, which is a two-year program, which is super exciting, so. And to piggyback off that, on the thirtieth of January, Sean, Russell, Ally Loud, and I were fortunate enough to get a tour with Foster Tech Principal Chris Davis, and I had not done a tour before, and it, I just want to say, my mind was blown, it is amazing what they do at Foster Tech, and our kids are so lucky to be able to get to be able to do that. On January thirty-first, I attended the Regional Educational Collaborative of Northern Franklin County Committee. There, as you, I don't know if you remember, last month I recorded on this as well, but the committee is made up of Grangeley, Eustis, SAB fifty-eight, and Carabasit Valley. The items on the agenda for this discussion were community engagement, how to celebrate the great things we are doing, community outreach and education, and collaboration within districts. So these districts that are getting together, we're really talking about how we can share resources and, and just collaborate more, so the discussions that we're having are really exciting. So grants, so since our last board meeting, there have been some new grant opportunities that have come our way. The first one is a literacy grant funded by the state. This grant will, it will start once approved and will end September thirtieth of this year. So it's a very short law of. So it's a very short law of programming for this grant, but the amount that will be awarded to our district if we're approved is $11,793.96. It needs to be literacy focused and our plan is to have our K-5 teachers complete a 30-hour training over the summer at the Institute for Multisensory Education or IMSE. It is an Orton, Willingham plus virtual training that is based on evidence-based practice, focused on essential, the essential components of teaching reading, which are alphabet knowledge, oral language, print knowledge, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, morphology, vocabulary, comprehension and writing. So in a nutshell, when our K-5 teachers are done with this training, they will be very highly trained reading teachers. So I will keep you updated on that. The second grant is also funded by the state, which is part of our American Rescue Plan funding or the American Rescue Plan funding. It will support summer learning for grades pre-K through 12. This project, if awarded, would cover the cost of our extended year program that happens over the summer. Right now, we do have some money earmarked in our SR3 grant for this, but if we were to get this grant, this would give us some relief and we could use that money in another, in another way. We're asking for $14,466.88 to cover the cost of four teachers and some supplies. These funds run from May 3rd through September 13th, so another very short window for this Sean, would you like to talk to the RUSP Grant, the Workforce Ready Initiative and the AI Workshop today?
Sure, yeah. Sounds good. Uh, so the RUSP Grant, I talked about this last year. I talked about this last year. It was approved, so we're moving forward on that. It's a collaborative grant between us, RSU 10, RSU 56 and MSAD 58. So this grant, they are not awarding us dollars for reimbursement. We had to put in first for items that we wanted and the grant is, the foundation for the grant is for rural schools and connectivity. So some of the items that I put in for the grant were like six of those Promethean displays to help us with the refresh of the projectors that are in the classrooms and then some Apple products. And then we have a small match of a couple MacBook's and a projector, so, uh, which we can handle. So that's very exciting news. A lot of items we will be receiving through that grant and that should, there's a little bit of red tape with the grant and RSU 10 is building a new school right now. So they put in a lot of items for the grant and they're the fiscal agent, which means they're heading the grant and us 56 and 58 are kind of like the supplemental entities, but we should be receiving equipment by the end of the summer. So that's the RUSP Grant. Workforce Ready is a initiative that Allison Loud and I are part of and we've been part of it for three years now. So I think that's kind of what sparked her inspiration to become more on the tech side than she was before. So we went down for a meeting in Augusta last month with eight other districts. So this initiative is for rural school districts to integrate computer science and computational thinking skills into classrooms. So especially for schools that don't have a dedicated computer science program. And it's been really good. We've been playing around with Lego robots, so a lot of your kids probably have played with those in classrooms and have talked about it, Scratch projects, digital citizenship. And I think the biggest part of this initiative is it kind of holds Allison and I to the fire to implement these lessons and it's been a really good thing. Uh, but when we went down to Augusta last month, they let us know that the Alphon Foundation has funded them for another five years with an $8 million donation. So part of that is that they're going to expand the focus to K through 12 instead of this K through eight. So before it was K through eight, now it's K through 12. And they're looking to get more teachers in this initiative and they do pay stipends. So there is a bit of a reward to do it. And one of their focuses is going to be professional learning. So teaching other educators how to integrate these computational skills and computer science skills into their everyday curriculum versus us, you know, implementing lessons. So that's exciting and they had a meeting with Georgia, the two folks who are running the initiative and it's been really, it's been a really good thing. And then the third thing, we did an AI workshop today for our Tuesday time. We brought in two folks who I've been communicating with from MLTI, so from the DOE. One was named Nicole Hayrod and the other was Jeff Ireland. And there are two educators, they're on a two-year hiatus from their schools, working for the DOE to help with professional development for free. So we did an AI workshop and we learned, you know, we've done workshops before about AI, learning about what it is and using it a little bit, but this one, we really dug into how we could use it as educators to one, save time and then two, use it with students. And I thought it was really successful. There was a lot of information. It was really dense. Uh, I do have the slides and I do plan on helping folks in the building use some of the tools. But the big thing here was teaching educators how to save time in their day to use these tools. And then also thinking about the policy creation surrounding using the tools. So, and I was talking to the folks after the session and they let me know that there might be something in the works from the state in terms of policy creation for artificial intelligence tools and for both student and staff use, uh, which is a big part of this whole deal. So yeah, that was about it. Welcome. Thank you.
Seth, are you, do you want to refer to?
They can go. They'll cross that off.
So today we had, right after school, a math meet and next month we're doing, the math team is going to be traveling to U of F to go have that really big math meet with all the other leading schools as well. Eric White just returned from his trip to New York City where he got to go perform at Carnegie Hall and he is very thankful that you all approved his trip and he said that it was amazing and it was a wonderful experience and really helped solidify his love of performing and the arts and he's, it was kind of like a little rehearse of him going to college. He's very excited and he's very happy you guys approved that trip. The RLRS middle school, high school chorus is going to be holding a talent show on March 8th, I believe. It's open to all ages. The class of 2027 is when we have an adult ball tournament in March where I think it's eight-person teams, $40 admission per team. And I think it's from maybe 10 to 2. It sounds like it's going to be really fun. The seniors finished up yearbook pages and we have also selected a guest speaker for our graduation. We decided to ask Ms. Restus if she'd be our guest speaker because we felt that during the transition from in-person to remote learning, she was really there for us and supported us not only in that, but also our transition to high school. And now the seniors have begun the scholarship application process as well.
Okay. What I have is that the high school had our sweetheart's dance on Saturday at seven, I believe. Like it's going on from, from the school spirit that I talked about last time and the Loon's Nest. The Loon's Nest has been very full from the games that I've been to and the support has been like great. We've had pom poms, which get everywhere and take everything up, but they're great. We've had clappers, which got taken away. But, but it, it's very fun and everybody there is super supportive, like the attendance is, is great. Student council is doing a food drive. We have, and talking about seniors, there's a sign down for seniors where, is that all the seniors that sign it? And then the guests?
Yes, only four have though.
Okay, only four have, but it's in that case, right before you, you come upstairs and they also have trophies in there, kind of rearrange a little bit of it. So it's, it's essentially like a seniors' case, celebrating the seniors. I thought that was really cool. We're having floor hockey and volleyball coming up. For the, the students that want to do it, you can sign up and do it. I thought that was cool. And then we have softball and baseball coming up with basketball from the UNN. And sophomores and juniors, who are going to be juniors and seniors next year, have started setting up for offsters.
What's the stuff going on? A little overwhelming. Steve, go.
Um, we've got most of my stuff. Um, yeah, so the basketball, I think now I got the news, our seasons are officially over. Um, I think we took a tough loss at Islesborough. The boys kept it until halftime, but then it didn't go well after. But just coming back, like the Loon's Nest, the home games, if we could bottle up that and send it on the road, I think it'd make a huge difference. We had teams come to town that had beat us pretty good at home that it didn't, we didn't win a couple of them, but man, did we have a good fight. And just seeing, you know, we put a lot of work in the students and Lindsay and I and Jeff of getting the word out, building excitement and the gyms, it was electric. Like the kids said that it was fun. Like it got loud in there a couple of times and I don't think some teams that visited us knew how to handle the level that the kids brought it. Uh, we did learn that we are going to move to rally rags instead of pom poms. Jeff will be finding, at graduation, if you attend graduation, you'll probably find a piece of tinsel somewhere in the gymnasium. The clappers, luckily all are broken, but we asked my guys, but just that, um, the kids coming out, I know of a couple of kids, one or two maybe in a middle school that were like bummed I didn't play basketball. I know of a high school boy that is like, I am playing basketball next year. So it was really nice and you know, it was a mess, but the day that got me the most of like this work pays off is the game was over. It was a really intense game and I came into the gym and I looked in the stands and there were students, parents, all cleaning up the booters and carrying their trash bags. And like, so when you start doing something like that, you are showing that you value what's going on. So anyways, it was, it was fun. Like it was really fun. So our ski team at MVC was last week at the MVCs. It was a one-day event at Black. We just missed second place, just missed first place by nine points. Place second, Ree Quimby was second in GS versus Slalom and Nat Stokes got a medal, I think for sixth in GS. So that was really successful. Tomorrow, our skiers are traveling to Black for day one of the Class B State Championships and they are skiing GS. And on Thursday, they're going back down to ski Slalom. So lots of skiing going on. Tuesday, school spirit, gym. And just one more grant, so we talked about the bar program, building assets, reducing risk. We piloted this year with the middle school and the state fully covered it last year. It's very expensive. You know, you get a lot of professional development, you get a coach. Well, this year they're like, we're only going to cover, they're going to cover 80% but the cost was still going to be close to $15,000. All right, we, we're not going to like, we're just going to do this on our own. We've got enough. And so I was like, Georgia just emailed and said, you know, thank you, but unless we get full coverage, we're just going to try to move forward on our own. She sent the email and like they got, they're like, oh, good news, we're covering it all. So it's really, it's like a $75,000 grant from the state, the schools do this. So we're going to do that. Our piece is a little bit of covering some labor for some professional development. So we're excited to keep that, we're going to expand that six through 12. It really is, it's about building relationships. You know, it, a big piece is really efficient meetings, talking about kids coming up with goals, who's going to do what. And then through their like, they call them I-times, but activities of just building relationships. Like part of the spreadsheet is before you say, like if you have a kid and they're like, what are they not doing? You say like, what are their strengths? Like what are the good things they do? So we're excited about that and glad they got covered because we get really good fresh development and a coach that works for us. So excited about that. Yeah, and the senior, check out the senior thing. Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty cool. We just got to get some more seniors to bring in some of their medals and stuff.
I need to send out a text.
Cause our seniors have lots of stuff we could stuff in there. Yeah. Good.
Nice. Thank you, Seth.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to move on to committee reports. Kathleen, what are the starting news?
Okay, well, we met on February 5th. The DCE thing was a little confusing because I was told that you didn't pass it and I reached out to find out what the problem was. And then I read the minutes and I said, wait a minute, they passed it.
Did you see Kathleen, it's actually under 10.3. So if you want to reference the discussion now on the DCE's minutes. Yeah, I was in there, just rock five, sorry. That's okay.
Oh, okay. So then we met on, and we're going to meet again on March 4th. March 4th.
March 4th.
I don't know why I have a little birthday on Monday, but.
That is a Monday.
The first Monday in March, that's the one? Okay. All right, I'll talk about the rest later.
All right, so Kathleen, Chris, you're up, your finance.
Uh, finance, we met today. We reviewed the budget prepared by staff and we'll be bringing a motion tonight to accept the budget and then tabling it to be voted on in March. And Roxanne will be sending it out to the entire board. So you have plenty of time to review and then you're welcome to come back to discuss at the March Finance Committee if you've got any questions, concerns, comments. If we get a bunch prior to that and it constitutes, then we'll schedule an additional workshop meeting on it. But budgets tracking very well against last year, very straightforward, not a lot of surprises, weren't any really. And everything makes logical sense and our biggest challenges are just overall the cost to be in compliance with federal government concerning special education and some of our other areas that adds to our budget. But I think commend the administration and staff for putting together a good, solid budget. We've had a good procedure, I think, the past two, three, four years. So we've been able to turn this from being a 17 or 18 meeting process down to just a couple of meetings. Working from the standpoint of what do we need versus just trying to throw numbers against the law. And I think I'm, I'm very impressed with the administration and team on that. Each year it gets easier because everybody gets what needs to be done and my understanding that Georgia did a good job of getting everything out to the team and the staff overall so that we've been in the past, had some superintendents that have worked in what I call the ivory tower and made the decisions and then it's a surprise to staff and I don't think that at all that that's what's going on here. And I think we're tracking very, if you look across the state, you're seeing districts with high single-digit increases and even double-digit year-over-year increases and we're not at all in that category. And we've built good prudent reserves. We've got good strategic planning and I think we'll be in great, great shape. So please look to your email, board members to see the budget. Georgia, of course, has an open door policy as do I. If you've got questions, concern, comments, I think I've got a pretty good handle on what's been presented and we were an open at mini level and glad to answer any questions that you may have. We also went over the stipend piece, which Ms. Van Anen and Ms. Restus were in and presented and did a fantastic job with the slide deck that outlines everything. We've got a really good, clear future. It's a point of equitable and logical process to go forward. The RTA is in support of and we accepted their recommendations wholeheartedly and we'll be working on implementing that. We'll be finishing up the athletic statement review next month when Jeff's able to be here. He was tied up, obviously, coaching the boys down in Islesborough today. But not a lot of, I would say, I've worked on a lot of budgets over the years and it's been drama and this time I think it's pretty straightforward and everybody gets, trying to find that balance between making sure we're integrating well in the classroom and providing the resources we need, but yet being spend threat versus over the top. So that's it for me.
Quite simple for you here in the morning. Danielle, you were up with the syllabus.
Um, as Chris said, Jeff was not there today, but he did update me, the walkway lights are fixed.
Okay.
The fuel tank vortex is scheduled to be here February 19th and 20th. Seth and Sean gave us the update on the COGS grant and they are meeting with Ricotta Thursday.
Yep, yep.
And. And, and then, oh, we did discuss the new bus. We have put it in our budget for next year, um, to buy a new bus to replace, what is it, seven? Cause we need to keep it on the rotation. So we're not buying several buses at one time. So we're doing for a new one.
Nice, Danielle. Awesome. We'll do like stick to negotiations.
I would do that in executive session. I would just say at this meeting that we have successfully completed the process of negotiating with the support of staff. And we're happy to have gotten that done and to have passed along the results of that to the budget committee. And that has been addressed and absorbed into that process.
Thank you, Bob. The report's appearing for you later too. Georgia, appointments, resignations, nominations and texts.
I have no appointments, resignations, nominations or transfers this month.
Okay, now moving on to action items. Is someone going to speak to the, uh, class trip?
Um, I don't know if you guys have a paper, but I can.
We do.
Yeah, we do.
We figured out where we want to go finally. We want to go to Boston. Ms. Mommy and I figure, we have about $10,000 in our accounts. So we put aside 2,000 for graduation class day. And for the trip, we just said 6,000 and then we have another $1,000 in case we fall over budget. But basically, um, we would go down to Concord Coach Lines on the white bus. Then go to Boston from there. And we are looking to get an Airbnb. I don't know if you, go to Red Sox game, sleep, looming group next day, play around Boston, sleep, then aquarium, maybe. Or just play in Boston again and then go home. And we're not sure, cause we could do, since it falls on Memorial Day weekend, we could do three nights, I think. But I just have to talk to Ms. Mommy and she's not here, so that's it.
If anyone has any questions?
Okay, so we're in Boston, Colin.
She has no idea if she's on with Chris.
What? What is it? It's huge concert. Jake and Doc's here, it's like Foo Fighters everywhere. Play a Bedway Bar. That's why I'm wondering, that's why I'm wondering, cause you've got, you've got Red Sox game down. Have you checked if there's a game that weekend? Because usually Boston, Colin.
The night we would get there, it would be, there's either an option for a night game. And there's some, they're doing some like cultural appreciation thing. That's what Ms. Mom told me. And then the next day, there's also a game, so we could do either.
You, you guys already have the funds, cause it says you need to raise funds, but you already have it in your class fund, right?
Yeah, 10,000.
I'll be impressed if you guys can find a three-night place in Boston for 1,400 bucks.
I already did, I have the Airbnb app. It's all ready. The one we found, the nicer one was 1,500 and that was only for two nights, but.
Right?
Are you staying like door to door to third person?
All right, yeah, can we stop with all the hard questions? Chris moves to a cruise.
Lily's all over it though.
All those in favor?
All right, Devin, gentlemen, good for you. Good job, Lily.
Nice job, Lily.
Okay, Kathleen, I'm moving over to you for, um, revision of the policy clauses.
Okay, well, E, B, C, D, school cancellation, postponement, early dismissal means keep revise. Only because, um, of the different, um, technologies being, when it was first written as now. So they're removing, uh, the school's telephone system and the internet system. And just everything's going to be on the website. And then, uh, number six, they just want to remove everything that would be longer available.
The only question I had was, um, just cause I know text and some of that stuff can be challenging, does, there's no place on our phone system now where you can like call in like a snow phone and just listen and be like, okay, not school. That's, that's all the answer.
We probably.
Cause I know we have that at the bank, like, cause sometimes people in remote areas, they at least pick up the number and go, they're not sure they can call.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's an option. And to be honest, Chris, I've been using this term lately, but I'm a little flat footed on this, um, provision of this policy. I, I hadn't seen it before tonight, so, but yeah, that is an option. With our voice system, I'm sure that we could, we could implement something where folks could call in. But what we're doing right now seems to work pretty well.
Yeah, we haven't hit it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've had to remind app, that seems to work pretty well, right, for most parents.
And I'm only wondering if, because like I hate keeping going over all these policies that we did, uh, almost change it to say, parents and students will be notified by the latest available means or something, so that we don't have to keep coming back and revise it.
Kind of broad, yeah.
Yeah, you know, like HDMI cable, they're going to go, you know what I mean?
Yeah, Chris's point, this is large volume, you know, it's an issue. So if we could have a governance directive that allows flexibility to cover these different methodologies that would serve the process more efficiently.
So what, what do you want to say then? The school's, the school's latest system, most current system?
Would just say, parents and students will be notified by.
The school?
The school. The school. Keep it simple.
Cause they will.
Yeah.
I don't know what it'll be like in the future.
It doesn't, I don't care about the delivery system.
It'll be chipping your head.
Yeah.
Don't wake up. Yeah, yeah.
So we just put a period after school and leave out the rest, including website?
Yeah, just say, parents and students will be notified.
By the school?
Of any cancellations or if it's supposed to be announced. I mean, do we still need to do the channel stations? Is that required by law?
Um, it is, I mean, most other schools do it. I mean, I don't know any schools who don't, put it that way.
Yeah.
Just transparency.
Yeah.
Well, all right, well, I guess we could just say, parents and students will be notified by the school, by whatever reasonable means are necessary or something to that effect. And then you guys decide how you do it.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, to me, I just don't, you know, five years from now, we're going to come back and be like.
Right. I'm sure it'll be something different. Oh, Deb's got something.
Go ahead, Deb.
Even though I'm 1,800 miles away. Just the only thing under that school cancellation on number five, should it read pre-K through grade five? Where we have pre-K now?
I think that's a good point, yes.
They don't get snow days, Deb, they have to come every day.
Okay.
So we're going to change it to pre-K to pre-five, grades pre-K through five. Okay.
Good catch, Deb.
Thank you.
And we're going to remove number six entirely, right?
And we redacted two. Yeah. Parents and students will be notified of, get rid of all the by television, whatever, of any cancellations or dismissals.
Chris, are you reading the actual sentence?
Parents and teachers will be notified.
Of any cancellations, postponements, early dismissals, period. And you can choose.
Early dismissals. And will be announced.
We don't have to put the announced, cause it doesn't, whatever.
On the stations, you don't want to put that on too, Georgia? That the notification is made by the designated administrator or program director of channels. You don't want to have that on, you don't think we need it?
Well, if you, I think it goes back to the point that they're trying to get away from, that we don't want to have it. Just try to keep it as gentle as possible.
A variety of methods.
Well, yeah, exactly. Cause first of all, everybody's switching, most people switch to streaming and channel six, 13 and eight, you can't even get our channel anymore.
Changing it to parents and students will be notified by, uh, notified of any cancellations, postponements, early dismissals. I know that didn't sound like a period, but I wasn't sure it sounded, but that's period.
If you want, we can add something that says, delivery of such information will be at the discretion of school administration. If you want to get form. That gives you full flexibility to, you want to send it by smoke signal?
Can we get like school bus?
So delivery of such information shall be at the discretion of school administration.
Yes.
Delivery method. Other than maybe like Seth wrapping it on a YouTube channel.
I can do that.
I don't know if I could, like.
I'll go live.
I don't know if you're watching that. In the reduction and the correction, there's five and the removal of six.
So move.
Rip it.
Second. All those in favor?
Perfect. Perfect, let's add again.
All right, Kathleen, next one.
So that's, then E, G, um, there were some reductions there to items. Number one, items, and they're not specifying, items may be loaned or used to the town of the RSU and nonprofit and not-for-profit groups, the towns of the. So we're just omitting items such as computers may be loaned, right?
Yeah, I was trying to do basically the same thing that we were talking about to make it so it's more broad and less specific.
Anyone wishing to borrow any equipment must file a request in writing. And that will be on the number one as well. Can we change the numbers on the rest of them?
Should we just change it to equipment, period?
I'm fine with that. Yeah.
Items such as.
The rec groups, rec group needs an extra, rec group needs an extra 10 basketballs. You guys got the discretion of.
Or something we don't even know yet.
Items.
I'm just saying.
Equipments may be loaned.
Yep.
Good idea.
Get rid of, and then that's it. The discretion of the staff, again, putting it back in, as Bob would say, management versus government.
Okay, that's a quick.
Okay.
This is a stretch, but just let's make sure we understand that by defining, by using the word equipment, we're not saying school buses or.
We already have a policy.
We just have a policy and we're good to go.
It's a good question, but I know you were going.
Just triggered the question, that's all.
But we also say at the discretion.
Right. And number two, we say, anyone wishing to borrow equipment must file a request in writing. So we've covered versus established equipment. Second is process and then.
Principle and process are the same as the purpose.
Yeah.
We've got on that.
Proposed, I've, motion to accept as revised.
Second. All those in favor?
Okay, the records management, we're just again, uh, removing some words, hard media and cloud storage on hard drives or blah, blah, blah. So audio and videotapes and in various forms, period, right?
Um, can you repeat that, Kathy, I'm sorry.
The sentence is, the purpose of this policy, records are all documentary material made or received and maintained by the school in accordance with law or rule or in the transaction of its business. Records may be created and received in multiple formats, including but not limited to print, handwriting, audio and videotapes and in various digital forms, period. And then we're removing E, G, oh, that, after that.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I'm also good with if you want to take away the specific types, you know, and just have it in various forms.
And mo, and you're creating, we see the multiple formats, period?
I'm good with that. I'm going to need to revisit it in the future when we have a new format that we don't know about yet.
Say multiple format and then redact everything all the way through drives, et cetera?
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then we're taking out, uh, the word procedures.
We're adding it.
We're taking out, uh, all applicable laws as rules pertaining to team retention.
Okay, cause it's highlighted, implies it's staying. So you're saying you're adapting.
No.
So that should have a cross through.
Yeah, that should have a cross through it, similar to the six that we just discussed on E, B, C, D. Are you sure it's not an addition?
Yeah, cause normally an addition would be highlighted.
No, I'm pretty sure that's. Georgia?
Yes.
Is there procedures?
Attending to the routine retention storage.
Yeah, procedures should be in there, because there are procedures that have to be followed. Yes.
All right, then what about on hard drive service, that's all.
We covered that with the multiple format.
Okay, so that's it with that one.
Make a motion to approve with the redaction as we've outlined, deleting from including all the way through, et cetera. And then adding and procedures in paragraph three and then whatever grammatical ones that Deb has found.
Can I get a second? Second. All those in favor?
Okay, and then, um, JJIF, you can do these two together and JJIFE. I guess you will saw what, um, but Lindsay, why she asked to have these removed, there was an explanation here.
Yes, it's on page three of JJIF.
Make sure you all read it. She's asking that these things, the, uh, post-injury.
The baseline test.
The baseline test will be, is going to be removed and just a rest and recovery for, that's being added to return to school, um, activities. And her note on page three explains it, if anybody wants to read that. Do you all have it?
This is because they found future stuff with a concussion pain that's not as dramatic as, I know. I don't call it remedied with a lot of this stuff.
And the same is on JJIF.
Is there any changes in JJIF?
Yes, there is, but, um, page is single.
Several.
JJIFE.
JJIF-E.
There's the change in that of the impact on last step one of the, uh, four, three.
I'm missing a page, I guess.
And all the student and parent information.
Got it?
All right, rest, recover, return to, okay.
So it's the same, it's the same correction.
I make a motion, we approve JJIF and JJIFE as proposed with the redacting of removing the impact baseline test and replacing with the rest of the company.
Can I get a second? Second. All those in favor? Okay, now, um.
So we still tabled on that other policy?
We are.
Tabled, we put a lot of confusion about it, whether it was, uh, tabled or not, and then it came out of the past and now it might have changed. So we'll take it up at the next meeting.
Would you mind if we took a couple of minutes and explained?
No, I would love that.
Cause Bob had.
Yeah, I just was going to say that first of all, I want to thank you for sending out whomever provided us with this, uh, example of conflict of interest disclosure form. This one looks like it might be a little old. And, um, I think for our purposes here, we want to take a look at the specific language in here and modify it a little bit. That basically, some of the wording in here basically suggests that it automatically assumes that someone with a conflict of interest.
Bob, can I pause you for a second? Who sent you that form?
I sent it to, uh, and Chris and, um, Joe again, it's me.
Okay, so can, could it all be sent to the board with, once we finish this discussion? That should be sent to the entirety of the board again with the policy.
Next, next.
Yeah, we can do that. So anyway, what? Yeah, we can do that. So anyway, we'll, we'll, we'll take a stab at a draft, change the language a little bit to make it suitable, or at least what we think is suitable for our, for our purposes.
But we want to add a B C B dash R, right, to this.
You're gonna need to codify this somehow.
All right, we'll, we'll do that in a round.
Okay.
But was there any other problem with B C B, just that you thought needed, um, this?
The form, but then, I think one of the things that came up, if I can go back to that, is our concern is, is that we're in a very small town here, and there's conflicts that always happen, and we need to at least come up with a policy that is, it's more of a conflict from a financial nature, I think, with it as a conflict versus like, somebody maybe, uh, for instance, has the contract to do the plowing, but then wants to be an assistant coach or a coach on the team, we don't want to recuse somebody because it's got, the plowing has nothing to do with being an athletic coach. So I think we want to make sure that we have a policy that allows, um, which we've historically been fine with, with that. We've got contracted individuals that do do coaching, we want to make sure, and the hoop is a little bit wider because of the simple fact is that we do get feedback from our athletic director that it is difficult to find people in the community to step up to do the coaching, and we don't want, I guess, a non-scope rule because somebody does some kind of a financial arrangement, whether it's cleaning the furnace, or mowing the lawn, or doing something that's with the school that would preclude them from being able to provide a good coaching experience for the children.
We need some level of.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Or we have a way that we can waive it, where somebody can say, okay, yes, I've got these services, here's my disclosure form, brings it to the board, the board says, this is not rise to the occasion, it puts us in an awkward position, we approve the through the thing, but it's disclosed, which I think is the purpose of the.
That's the whole point.
Yeah.
That is the whole.
Sorry, we'll, we'll sort that out at the, the policy meeting, and we'll bring it to the board next month.
I'm sorry to delay that process, but I think it's an important.
The, the, the concept of disclosure, uh, in conflict of interest, really, um, what it does to serve the, the good faith of it all, is it basically lets everybody know that potential exists. So there's basically a spotlight on that particular situation, which, uh, by virtue of that system actually creates better behavior and good behavior in the situation. So we'll, we'll get this done.
Right, it's not just a coaching, like, for instance, uh, from a banking standpoint, if I, you know, put in a bid for the, the bus thing, I need to disclose, and I can't focus.
Chris is selling honey to the cafeteria.
Yeah.
That's a real problem.
Right. So thanks for hearing us, Kathy.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks a lot.
All right, moving on to action item ten point three, um, moving the, or altering the March fifteenth workshop day to make this for the, Seth, did you want to speak, Seth, Georgia?
Either.
Oh.
Yeah, just due to, I mean, we are considering waivers for, you know, the Lewiston, um, the tragedy in October and the flood, but just to, you know, make up another one, we can have a school, yeah, we can have a school day on that day. And the one thing we don't have, because one of the days in October around Lewiston was, um, we use it as a workshop day. We don't have that workshop day at the end of the year, so give us that day, which people are here anyways, um, and it just helps us no days. And the R T A was unanimous in their support. They just wanted to make sure, I'll give them some Tuesday time for vertical teaming, which we would have used. That day would have been for mostly vertical teaming, and so I'll ensure that some Tuesday time gets to go to that, so.
And, and Mount Blue R C nine was also, um, taking, doing the same thing, so we'll follow in our foster tech program and follow in line with them.
We will, for like high school kids, I think it'll be green, green, like Friday will be a green day, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna readjust the entire calendar after. We'll just have another green day, so we stay on track with Mount Blue, because I assume they're not, they're doing the same thing, they're probably like blue, 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 or something.
Yeah, exactly, and then, yeah, they ended it for double.
Yep.
Can we get a motion to approve?
Motion to.
Second. All those in favor? And then, um, moving on to budget presentation, uh, action item ten point four, budget presentation, Chris.
Um, Georgia, oh, you guys go to executive.
Not yet, we have one more action.
One more action. So, uh, as I mentioned in my lengthy report from the finance committee, uh, we reviewed at the finance committee, uh, the initial proposed draft from staff board, the budget, um, which, uh, Roxanne provided to us this afternoon. What I'd like to do is like what we did in the past, which was, we accept the budget, we feel good about it from the finance committee side, we're not saying this is the last bite of the apple, but we're gonna accept it, table it, not take any action. Everyone on the board's gonna receive a copy, and you'll have the next month to review it, and then we will vote to accept it next month for approval with any proposed revised changes, I'm asking any of you, if you've got questions, reach out, Georgia, myself, Roxanne, and then, uh, come to that meeting if you've got concerns. Otherwise, as proposed here, we'll go forward, I think it's a strong budget, I think we're, we're in, we're in good shape, and, uh, we came out of committee with that approval to at least put it to the board, uh, to do that, so. My motion is to, uh, put this budget forward and then table it for vote for next month.
Second.
And so we can have any discussion, but we can table right now, if anyone has any questions, I'm glad to. Move that we table it until the March meeting.
Can I get a second, second, all those in favor? Um, just due to the fact that we're going to try to get some people out of here a little bit, which are we're flipping, uh, ten six and ten five. So I will need a motion to vote into executive session, which is listed as ten point six.
Can we leave the exact?
Georgia, you still on your computer?
Yeah. I make a motion, we go into the, uh, executive session for personal matter, twenty eight M R S A, well, six one oh one M D O, rule chapter twenty five.
For Joan and Deb, I was thinking I'd do another Google meet, because the.
All those in favor?
Been recorded.
Second. Why are you so second?
Oh, you can't go virtual, sorry. Thanks, Chris. Sorry, Dad, sorry, Joan. I was seeing if you'd do the roll, Chris.
All right, folks. I'm gonna check out.
Bye, Deb.
So I did all that, but do you need any of the policies I have against you?
Okay.
Who's missing?
Dr. Green.
Make a motion.
Mr. Song.
I'm going to shut this door.
Oh, we've got keys.
I'll take care of that. I think we're done there. I hope.
Bob, you want to make a motion for this?
Um, I would like to make a motion that, uh, the, uh, Oregon State Regional School Board, let's see if you could be... Seventy-eight, sorry.
All right, so actually, all right, it's you.
All right, it's you. Seventy-eight, uh, accepts the, uh, contract that was already ratified by the support staff. It will only affect September first.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
What was the effective date on that?
September first. Once again, I'd just like for the record to thank the, um, negotiations subcommittee of the school board, but I'd really also like to thank Roxanne and Georgia for their work on this. And I'd also really like to thank the employees of the school that, uh, spend their time in that very... and that are members of the support staff, uh, as part of this process.
Thanks, bud.